Call the meeting to order. It's a meeting of May 3rd. We'll note that all commissioners are present. First item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business?
I move we approve the order of business.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All who say nay, motion carries. Next item for your consideration is a consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Now, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mrs. Stookert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to tab four. And the first item we have there is an item regarding a community action teen dance. Mr. Kessel, can you introduce this item?
President Johnson, there's been a request to rent the armory for the use of a teen dance on July 2nd of 2010. There has been some concern raised about using the armory for those purposes. In the past, there have been inadequate security, concerns with underage drinking, and some vandalism that has occurred on that property due to dances. So, there are some people in the audience today who would like to add some additional comments to that, but certainly those three items specifically will hopefully be addressed by their comments.
Okay. Is there someone that would like to comment regarding this item?
Good evening, Mayor Johnson, City Commissioners. My name is Becky Wazowski, and I'm with Community Action Partnership. I'm the Safe Communities Coordinator, and we had a town hall meeting back on April 22nd in which we addressed a lot of the issues that happened with underage youth and that. And we had 29 people there, 12 of which were youth, and we have a few of them here today with us. One of the things that we have done in the past is a focus group, and we talked with a large group of people, and a lot of the things that they talked about, and in particular the youth, is that there is nothing for the kids to do. And so, we kind of did a walkthrough of our community to see what things there are for kids to do after 10, 11 o'clock at night. There is nothing in this community that's open for them to do in terms of movie theaters. Once the last show's done, that's it, and that's sometimes between 10:30, 11, and 12 o'clock, depending on the length of the movie. Bowling alleys all close at 11 o'clock, and so there is nothing else for them to do. They used to have a lot of dances. There were teen dances that were put on by the community and the school district, and they've cut back on some of that. And so, they asked to do something, in particular during the Rough Rider Day celebrations. If you look at their agenda, there is really nothing for that age group of kids, that whole entire celebration. Now, they can go to the parade, and they can do some of the family events, but in the evening, there is nothing for them to do. And they asked if there could be a dance or something put on. So, we were fortunate. We have a sponsor. Ms. Shirley Kate Dukert of Home and Land Company is willing to sponsor an event for us, and that would include paying for the band, paying for the rental, and all that stuff. And then, we're hoping that we'll get some other sponsors from the community to step forward in terms of the food or any beverages that we'd like to have, pop beverages. And we have a couple of kids with you to talk to you about that as well, so they could express some of their opinions, but we would like to host an event. I realize we've had problems in the past, but that's been a few years, and these aren't the same group of kids that were here four years ago or whenever the event was. So, we'd like to at least try it. This is their one-time chance. If it doesn't work, then we won't be doing anything like this again. Would anybody else like to come that was a part of the meeting? We have several people here. Holly is our SAD coordinator.
Good evening. I brought a couple of SAD students. SAD stands for Students Against Destructive Decisions, and we did host a town hall meeting, I believe it was last week, and that was a concern that kids are out drinking because they feel that they don't have a lot of activities to do. Of course, the kids that are in my group, you know, they sign a contract, they don't do drugs or alcohol or tobacco, but it's one thing we need to do is host activities for other kids, hopefully so they will start making the right choices of no longer drinking or to get them off alcohol. I guess if they want to add anything. They're kind of shy. Do you think it's important we have a dance over Rough Rider Days?
I think it is. Of course, I won't be doing any of that, but I know a lot of my friends or kids I go to school with are going to be out having parties, and I think this will cut down, like, DUIs and MICs in our school and things like that. So, I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a really good idea, too, because a lot of people say, like, I drink because there's nothing to do in this town, and really, you can't, kids don't really go to sleep very late at night, so they need something to do later than 10 o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
So, what we're here tonight for is to ask for your support in supporting this endeavor that we'd like to do. Try it out, see how things go, and if we have issues like we've had in the past, then we know we're not going to try that again, but we're hoping that the kids will come on board. We have about 12 of them that were there that night, and they'd be willing to help us out. They're going to market it and through their network of how they do things and try and get the kids to come to this event, and hopefully we'll get some volunteers that will step forward and help us do some of the monitoring of what's happening that night so we don't have any issues. And we're right in front of the law enforcement center, so we can't get any closer than if we were inside, so we're hoping that will help as well.
Can, will you be providing security that night?
Well, we're going to have volunteers, but we're hoping to find, we could try and hire. There is some private security that we could try and hire. I guess we have a meeting Friday at noon after this meeting to see how things are going to go, what kind of support we have, and then we're going to discuss that.
Mr. President.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
Becky, would you tell them who's on our committee?
Well, we had Sheriff Clarence Tuohy was there, Captain Dustin Dossinger, and Sergeant Will Vance from the North Dakota Highway Patrol. Those three were there as part of the group, and then there were several people in the audience that were willing to participate and help. So, we're hoping with the SAD group and the SAD kids and the other people, there was several folks that were involved. I don't know everybody's name that was there, but like I said, we had 29 people there, so we're hoping from this, we can generate more.
We would be the ones that would be monitoring and be the chaperone, so to speak, so we're hoping to have at least 25 parents, grandparents there to help us, so. And if they leave, they can't come back in.
That's right.
And no drinks are permitted, and drinks will be provided inside, soft drinks.
I was on the commission last time we did this, and I recall we did have problems with alcohol, I think some drugs, and as Mr. Kessel said, we did have some destruction inside the building also. And I seem to recall that a lot of that was due to kind of lack of
Security.
Official security during that time. And I know the young people that you have here tonight, and many of their friends are not going to be the problem.
Right.
It's others.
And that's where we're hoping that we have enough people there, and we can look at hiring, I think it's the Alpha Six group. We can check on them, see if they're available that night, and hire them, but then they have to be constantly walking around like we're going to be. I'm a grandmother, I'm a parent, and I'm planning on being there that night, and if I can get my husband to come with me, he's going to be there, too. I'm volunteering.
You look too young to be a grandparent.
Thank you. I'm number five next week.
Number five. Okay. Other comments, questions here?
President Johnson, if I may, I have a question. Since this is an event that you're planning to address teens and obviously underage teens, are you going to be turning away people from the dance that are older?
We are, we're going to ID them. They should have a school ID on them, and this is what we're going to check out with the school and the kids on Friday at the meeting at Dickinson High, and then we have to talk to Trinity as well. But we're going to ID them, hopefully they're 9th through 12th grade. And so, I know the question has already risen, what are we going to do with 19 or 20-year-olds or 20, you know, because they're not old enough also to go in the bar. So, this group is going to have to address that on Friday and decide what we're going to do, so. Because that sometimes is where we have the issue, too, because they're not of the same age, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Rummel, does the Dickinson Police Department have a position on this? Captain Dossinger does, okay.
Hi, good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. The police department strongly, you know, supports having an event over Rough Rider Days for the teenagers. Our only main concern would be the security issue. We'd like to see a full-time security staff hired for the events, particularly over that weekend is a busy timeframe for our department. Our manpower is usually pretty tasked for 4th of July weekend. In addition to the volunteers, we would like to see a full-time security force hired for that event at the armory. Particularly, we always run into problems in the parking lot. As far as underage drinking, vandalism and fights have been an issue in the past, so we definitely like to see a security company hired for that.
Thank you, Captain. Any comments, questions for Captain Dossinger, as long as he's there? All right, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
A couple of items I want to discuss. I'm going to call you Becky, because your last name is always, I know you've been here many, many times, but we know you as Becky.
Okay.
What's the time? When is this going to end, this dance? What time?
I think midnight is what we talked about.
Nine to 12.
Nine to 12.
12 o'clock, okay. I think that the last dances we've had, we've had a contract, I believe, and in that contract, it required a security firm, I believe. And my only concern there is if it's not handled with a security firm, what kind of legal issues can you guys get into or even the city by allowing one of those without a legal security firm there? That's one thing I would like to check into. I was also on the board the last time, and one of the problems, one of the bigger problems was a vandalism that went on in the restrooms up there. I mean, that was the start of everything there. And I believe that's where a lot of things started, in those restrooms there.
Right.
What ideas do you have short of, I mean, not even being short of being in that bathroom to allow that vandal doesn't occur, exchange of alcohol, drugs, or anything else?
Well, I haven't been in the armory for a while, so I can't remember where the restrooms are. I know ones, when you come in, I just don't know if they're both there, but if they're both fairly close, I think having somebody stand outside, not afraid to enter if they hear something, or, you know, monitoring how many are going in and coming out, how long they're in there, just having somebody keep an eye on something like that. If there is an issue, then that's when you call a security guard. And I think security should be at the door checking for their ID when they come in.
I have no problem with anything that's going on. I think it's great. I just encourage that that is the one place that sort of monitored. If the kids know that at any time someone can come in there and see what's going on, then that might eliminate some of your problems that you're going to have.
Okay.
I feel comfortable with another chance here. It's been a few years, and I know it's a whole different group and good kids and
Well, our kids oftentimes aren't feeling like they're valued, that they're, you know, a full part of the community in terms of what they're able to do, and so this is the big thing that came up, that they're bored and they have nothing to do. We've tried going through this several different ways, and this is what they said, and we thought, you know, why not try it again? It's been a few years. If they fail, then we're not doing it again. Then it's just, you know, they're going to have to come up with other things themselves. But we have to give them a chance.
I have that. Pardon you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steiner. Anybody else? I think what I'm hearing then is that we'd be willing to do this provided that you have adequate formal security. I don't think I heard that your friends and family would pass for the adequate
Right.
...security. I mean, that you'd have to contract with a security firm.
And we will contact them probably this week and firm up if they're available that night to make sure that we have something.
Ms. Scherzide, do you think I accurately stated how you're feeling?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Would someone want to put that in the form of a formal motion, then?
I'll make a motion that we allow the armory to be rented for the teen dance on July 2nd with the condition that security is hired. I'm sure Captain Dossinger can help us with that.
We have the motion. Is there a second?
No, second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mrs. Stookert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. It's 5:30. We have a 5:30 timetable agenda item. You'll find that under tab three. And this involves a city land sale called Country Oaks. We have two parties that have made offers. We have a recommendation from the city attorney and the city administrator to sell to the Bullingers. Land Corps LLC has a right to appeal that, so if there's a representative or representatives from Land Corps LLC that would like to address the commission on this item, you may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Mr. President, members of the commission, my name is Chad Walker, and I'm from Bismarck. Jason Frederick and I are partners. We want to acquire this property. Back on March 25th, we made an offer to purchase this property based on acreage that was provided by Corey Schweitzer for $180,000. We were then informed by Mr. Kessel on March 29th that the property included a lot that contained city services and that our offer must be changed to $205,500. We complied with this request. We were then informed on April 1st that it would be necessary for us to use the city's purchase agreement form. Up until that point, we had used our purchase agreement form. That in order for our offer to remain in first position, it needed to be submitted by April 14th with the closing date of April, or excuse me, of May 15th. The city's purchase agreement form was submitted with an addendum on April 14th. We were notified that no addendum could be used, so on April 16th, the final agreement was submitted with no addendum. The purpose of the addendum was to allow us to do some due diligence on the property, to verify some of the engineering, to make sure that we could develop this property the way that it had been planted since we were not involved in the original planting of that property. Mr. Kessel had informed us that the agreement looked good and that he would recommend that it be signed. On April 21st, Jason was notified at a planning and zoning meeting that the agreement was bumped to second place because of the disclosure language that I had to put into the agreement because I'm a licensed real estate broker. Today, the city attorney spoke with our attorney, Casey Chapman, in Bismarck, and Mr. Chapman called me on the way down here, notified me that now the city attorney had stated that the agreement was bumped because, not because of the language in Section 16, but because the changes which we were instructed to make by Mr. Kessel in order for our agreement to remain in first position were received after Mr. Bullinger's offer. We have done everything that the city has asked us to do with regard to this transaction, and we feel like we've been penalized for doing it. So, we hope that you will consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Would commissioners have any questions for Mr. Walker? I guess there's no questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Commissioners, you've had an opportunity to read Mr. Coleen's analysis and his recommendation. Do you have any comments or questions for Mr. Coleen?
I'd like to better understand the price that we had set on the property. Was it the 180, the 205? Can you flesh that out a little bit better?
Oh, would Mr. Kessel speak to the price of the property and how that was ascertained?
The price that the commission has set for that land was $5,000 an acre. For the land, there was one exception to that. There was a lot on the south side that had improvements upon it. The cost of that lot alone was between $18,000 and $20,000. We weren't aware until slightly after the offer was made that that lot had those improvements, and originally, it wasn't included in their offer. Once that was researched, I did make the mention to Mr. Walker and Mr. Frederick, and they revised their offer to include that lot at the revised price.
The property as it now stands today is this 36.45 acres? That's
Yes, I believe that to be accurate.
Okay.
Excuse me. So, without that additional lot, it was 36 times 5,000? Is that correct?
Right. Yeah, the lot size was, or the lot price that the commission set was 5,000 an acre.
Yeah. Okay.
I just want to make sure that we understand here. The 36.45, does that include the lot that you referred to earlier that has a value of $18,000 or $20,000, I think you said?
The lot that were you, that's in question, I don't believe is included in the 36 acres because it was listed singly on our price.
That wasn't listed as this block?
I, it wasn't listed as a $5,000 per acre price tag that the commission set, so it should be, I believe, in addition to.
If I may, I have a comment regarding that. I was party to that. Mr. Schweitzer is the one that gave me the acreage. We took the 5,000 times the acreage, and that's what the original offer was submitted at. As far as that lot, we assumed at that time it was included. I did have discussions with Mr. Kessel once he said we had to change it to 205.5. I said, can we exclude that lot then? We didn't have the exact legal description when we submitted our first offer, but we did get that later at some point, the exact legals of all the lots. But we intended to make a full-price offer on everything that was for sale there. That was our intentions.
Did you make the offer on the city purchase agreement form?
Our original offer was not on the city purchase agreement form. We were not instructed till a later date that we needed to use that form, and Mr. Kessel talked to Mr. Walker regarding that. Once we were told we had to do that, we did amend our offer on the city's purchase agreement.
Have you purchased land from the city before?
I have purchased land from the city before, but in the past, we've used purchase agreements with Laduke before, so.
You haven't used a city purchase agreement?
I have on both, I have both. I have, I've used both. I've bought the land personally without any representation on the city's purchase agreement before when Jen, not Jen, uh
Cindy?
Cindy was here, yes.
Are you aware of the city's real estate policy?
The last purchase I made from the city was the 50 acres over on the east side, which was four or five years ago, so I'm not 100% up to par with it, and of course, Mr. Walker probably was not, you know, 100% up to
The land that you bought on the east side, was that a full-price offer, do you recall?
No, we came into the commission and made an offer for a lot at that time, if you recall.
So, that took commission approval, then?
Yes, it did. I don't know if there was actually at that time even a price set on that property, to be honest with you. I don't believe there was, so.
Yeah, I can't remember either, so.
Yeah, I don't, for some reason, I don't believe that there was a price, and for some, I think that might have been even prior to the latest real estate policy that we have now, but don't hold me to that. I'm not sure.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kessel, I have a question for you. So, one, I think, if I recall correctly, one day after you received this initial offer from Land Corps, the Bullingers gave a full-price offer submitted on the city purchase agreement form.
That would be accurate.
Did you instruct them to do it that way?
To put it on a city
Right.
I don't recall if I did that or not. My guess would be no, because
Did they deal with you on that?
Most of the preliminary dealings were with Ms. Binstock, but yes, I did have dealings with the Bullingers after their offer came in.
But I guess what I'm trying to get to a point here is, did the Bullingers receive any coaching from the city on how to submit their offer? Excuse me. Otherwise, we don't get you recorded. You got to come to the podium, state your name, and start all over.
I can answer that. I was over to the city on probably March 24th, picked up all the materials on this property, picked up copies of the purchase agreements from Brita, met with Mr. Bullinger the next day. We filled them out, brought them back the next day. We've done several on the form. I knew the form had to be used, so.
You were aware that this is the way the city
Absolutely.
Does it, what the real estate policy was, and, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions by commissioners?
Mr. President, I guess I know what the city policy is where you have, on a full-price offer, you put 10% down, no contingencies, and then it can be accepted without coming to us. But in the real estate world, when we have two offers at the same full-price offer, we always counter. So, I guess I need some help here. We don't do that on the city level?
I think we'll let Mr. Coleen give you some help. I think it's pretty well laid out in his memo, but go ahead, Mr. Coleen.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city's policy that the commission has adopted is that when an offer comes in at full price, the city administrator has the authority to close the sale, to sign the agreement and close the sale. When there are multiple offers on the same property, the city's policy is that the first offer received takes precedence, and the city administrator is authorized to take that first offer and close the sale, sign the agreement, and close the sale. So, there is a provision in the policy where the city can negotiate with a purchaser if an offer comes in at less than full price or with contingencies. There's a real estate committee that's formed, and they take control of those negotiations and can make a recommendation to the city commission for approval. But the city's general policy is if an offer comes in at full price and that offer is available for acceptance by the city administrator.
Mr. Coleen, when we say a full-price offer, it not only has to be a full price, but it has to be on the city purchase agreement form.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
If it's not on the purchase agreement form, it doesn't constitute a full-price offer.
Well, if it doesn't come on, come in on the city's form, the real estate committee would still be authorized to negotiate with that prospective purchaser, but any final action would be up to the city commission.
Right.
So, somebody could bring a non-standard agreement before the city commission and ask for that agreement to be approved.
But the city administrator isn't authorized to execute that.
That is correct.
Because it is a, it's different from our policy.
Correct.
And I think that's really the heart of the matter here, that we had two offers, one one day and one the next day. The one on the second day was on the city form. The one on the second day was on the city form at the city-listed price, the one on the first day was not on the city form.
The other provision that I didn't address in the memo, but I think there's some scrutiny on here too, is that the first offer that was received from Land Corps on March 25th was substantially different than what the city has approved in the past. It called for the city to convey the property by warranty deed, and the city's prior practice and procedure has always been to convey property by quid claim deed. So when a warranty deed offer comes in, that's something that is substantially different than anything the city has done in the past. Mr. Kessel rejected that offer, and when the offer came in on the 26th on our standard form, that offer took precedence then.
Mr. Walker?
I've never dealt with the City of Dickinson before on a real estate purchase like this, so I was not aware of the real estate policy. All I can say is that I did everything exactly the way that Mr. Kessel asked me to do it. And if you guys are unsure of whether I did that or not, then I would ask that you table the matter to the next meeting and review all the emails that I have, and you can see for yourself. If you look at the exchanges between us, you'll see that I did everything exactly as was instructed.
Mr. Coleen, did you review those emails?
I did, yes. It's apparent from the email exchanges between Mr. Kessel and Mr. Walker and Mr. Frederick that Mr. Kessel was negotiating with Land Corps after receiving the Bullinger offer. There are some comments in the emails where Mr. Kessel expresses his intent to convey the property to Land Corps if they submit the purchase agreement within a certain period of time. That sort of negotiation is permissible under our policy. Mr. Kessel sits on the real estate committee, and pursuant to the policy, is authorized to negotiate with prospective purchasers regarding the terms of the sale. So there's... I don't think there's anything improper in what Mr. Kessel did in that regard. Mr. Kessel, however, does not have the ability or the authority to bind the city into any sort of real estate agreement, and certainly not verbally. Real estate transactions have to be in writing, and even at that point, the policy calls for any negotiated agreements to come before the city commission prior to approval. I believe the email exchanges that Mr. Walker references speak to that, where Mr. Kessel informed him that any changes to the standard form agreement would have to come before the city commission for final approval.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen.
Mr. President, I would submit that if you review those emails, I think that you would have a different opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Coleen, help me understand. Maybe I missed something that was said, but why are we feeling the original offer from Land Corps was not a full-price offer? Was it not 36 acres at 5,000? Or what did I miss there?
No, the full-price offer that the city has established for this property is $205,000 or somewhere in there. The offer that came in from Land Corps was at $180,000. From what I understand, they mispriced one of the lots that had services to it at that time.
So you're saying that initial offer of 180 included that additional lot?
That is my understanding, included the additional lot, but not at the price that the city had established for it.
Nor was it on the city purchase agreement form?
Correct.
I have another question, Mr. President. Since I never saw the purchase agreements, were they both with the 10% down, and did they both have no contingencies?
The original offer that came in for Land Corps didn't have any contingencies, to my best memory, but it did require the city to convey the property by warranty deed, and it also required the city to give, I believe it was a 30-day inspection period for Land Corps to come onto the property and take test borings and soil samples, and then if those samples or those tests did not come back to Land Corps satisfaction, it allowed them to terminate the agreement and recover their earnest money and purchase price of the property.
So that was a contingency?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Mr. Walker? Excuse me, Mr. Jackson?
I just want to clarify, what is... What lot is that, that has the improvements, that the $20,000 or $25,000 lot? Can you tell me what that is?
It is Lot 1, Block 12, on your map.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
Mr. President, members of the commission, when I was notified that the city would not consider an agreement with a contingency, we removed all our contingencies. But we... I was not aware that the city would not consider that, so that's why we had written that due diligence period in there.
Was that through writing, Mr. Walker?
Pardon me?
Where you removed the contingencies, was that in writing, or...
No, when we revised the purchase agreement and used your form, we did so without those contingencies.
One more question. On our forms, it doesn't allow you to have contingencies, right?
On our form, our form contains no contingencies. That's right.
Okay. That's what happened.
I don't think there's any dispute, Mr. Walker, that your offer now is on the right form at the correct amount. You know, the thing is, by the time you got there, there was another offer in that was for the right amount on the correct form, and really, I think it's pretty clear, according to our policy, that's the offer we have to accept.
Mr. President, I understand that. I would ask that the commission table the matter and just review the emails, because I think after you read the emails, it'll provide you with a better understanding as to why I acted the way that I did. The way that I acted was the way that I was instructed by Mr. Kessel.
Mr. President. Mr. Steiner?
Mr. Coleen, have you had a chance to look at all the emails Mr. Walker's talking about and reviewed them?
Yes, I have.
This is your recommendation yet? And it looks like by default is where your recommendation is coming up. I mean, is that correct? I mean, are our hands tied to whether we could or could not even change this here?
In my view, what the written real estate policy requires is that you give precedence to the first offer that was submitted, and the first offer that came in on form that we have previously approved with the city is the Bullinger offer. I have reviewed all the emails that Mr. Walker references, and I think there's no doubt in there that Mr. Kessel does make comments in those emails that he intended to convey the property to Mr. Walker and to Land Corps. However, I don't view those comments by Mr. Kessel as binding upon the city, because any action, any final action, particularly when we're dealing with a non-standard form, has to come before the city commission for approval. Whatever those comments were, Mr. Kessel doesn't have the ability to bind the city. I don't fault Mr. Walker or fault Land Corps for trying to do something wrong here. I think they tried to comply with the city's requests. The problem is, they just came in second. They came in second in time, and pursuant to our policy, I believe the city's obligation is to convey the property to Mr. Bullinger.
Mr. President, if I may. Mr. Kessel, would you agree that you told me that if we had the purchase agreement on the city's form to you by April 14th, that we would still be in first position? Would you agree with that statement?
Mr. Walker, in the emails that we exchanged, I made a statement very similar to that, if not exactly that. And I think you would also agree that we made every attempt to try to get the agreement in a form that's acceptable to the city commission, and that I did inform you that any alterations to a standard purchase agreement that the city has set, I can't agree with. I have to bring that to the city commission. I think I made reference to that.
So you would agree... So you would agree that you told Mr. Frederick that the reason why that our offer was no longer in first position was because I added the language about, you know, section 16 about being a licensed real estate broker, that I was representing us in this transaction? That is why you told me that our offer was bumped from first to second place?
Yes, I did make that comment. To Mr. Friedrich.
So, I mean, we complied with what Mr. Kessel said. We had agreement there on April 14th. We were told that if we did that on that form, our agreement would be in first position, and now it's not happening the way that we were instructed it would be.
But if you've listened to our attorney, you've heard our attorney tell you that he didn't have the authority to make an agreement with you. Only we have that authority once you've altered the agreement.
Right. No, I understand that.
You understand that. Now, I think if Mr. Kessel, looking back on your emails, do you wish you would have worded them a little differently?
I certainly do, President Johnson. I use the word intent. You know, they were the original... They stated their intent first, but as we worked this out, I definitely wish that I had stated things much differently in those emails.
Would you also wish that you would have involved the city attorney a little earlier in this process?
I think that would have been a good judgment.
So, you know, I think, you know, what we're guilty of here is not bringing the attorney in earlier. That would have helped us a lot and helped you, and I think it could have been handled better in the emails. I've looked at the emails myself. But regardless of that, the Bullingers have complied with the city policy. They did it first. I think we would have a bigger problem on our hands if we awarded the land to you and not to them.
I understand, and I guess it's... I'm glad that you guys were aware of the policy. I wasn't. No, I did everything that Mr. Kessel said. I mean, you reviewed the emails. We were told that if the agreement was submitted by April 14th on the city's form, that we would have... That we would be in first position. We did that. Mr. Kessel was not authorized to make those promises on behalf of the city. That's why I am here tonight. I'm asking for you to consider that that happened. Consider that, and maybe you would be willing to still sell the property to us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions by commissioners?
Are we looking for a motion, or...
Well, that's a good question, and I think we're going to ask that of the city attorney. I suppose theoretically, since we have an offer that complies with the policy and is deemed an offer that's, I guess, the first offer, and it's doesn't... It's in no way is it a variance from our policy, theoretically, you have the right to execute that. But given that there's a little mud in the water here, maybe we should act on it as a commission. I guess, Mr. Coleen, we'd look for some direction from you.
Mr. President, I'd agree with that. I think in theory, pursuant to our policy, Mr. Kessel would have the ability to sign the agreement and close the transaction. In light of the questions that have been raised, though, I think it may be wise for the city commission as a whole to give your decision on it and give your opinion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
I'll move we consummate the sale to the Bullingers.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. It's still open for discussion, then.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Discussion. I don't know if I should be addressing this to Mrs. Christensen or to the Bullingers, but I think somewhere in your information you sent us, you mentioned there may be a consideration of a 2016 split?
You have to, yeah, come up.
We suggested that when we knew there were a couple offers out there, and we did not get positive results back, but I'm sure Gary'd be willing to work with whoever after he gets the land.
I guess I got to ask that question, since I read it in here, if that offer's still on the table with Mr. Walker for 2016.
I know that he'd be more than willing to work with him on it.
It'd be up to you guys after. I just have to ask the question, I saw it in here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any other comments or questions here?
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. President. It doesn't have anything to do with either parties, but I'm thinking in the future, maybe we need to change our policies when we get two full-price offers or multiple, that we need to counter hire back. You know, it's always a benefit to the city to make more money than less money, and then have it where we normally do is you have so much time, the first one that brings it back at the higher offer then gets it.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. DuKart. Any other comments?
Mr. President, just one other comment here. I think this is just a bad transaction that started out with good intention, but it just got bad, and I don't think Mr. Kessel intended to do anything wrong here. I think both part real estate firms out there. I think this just got off to a bad start, and something just fell through the cracks, right? You know, I'm not blaming Mr. Kessel. I'm not blaming you guys for the wrong form, and so on. I would agree with Mrs. DuKart that hopefully this won't happen again if we can put something in place to make sure that it doesn't, and so on, but, you know, it's just a bad situation that happened here, and I don't hold anyone to blame for it. It's just a situation that came down the line.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Anybody else wish to comment?
I think one more thing, Mr. President, and then I'll shut up. We shouldn't accept any offers that aren't on our forms anymore.
Anything... Any other comments, then? You know, if we'd like to discuss and debate the real estate policy, I think that's just fine. We should, you know, put that as a separate agenda item. But I think, you know, in this marketplace, it's likely we are going to receive multiple offers, and I think it's good business on the part of the city, when we receive multiple offers, to still continue to negotiate with both parties, or if there's more than two parties, because you never know if they're going to be able to close, or if there's some sort of contingency at the end. So I think that's fine to do. I think, actually, I think the policy we have functions quite right. You know, people in our marketplace just have to understand that if you're going to vary from the policy, each time you vary, it's a new offer. It's a new offer.
I just want to make one comment to that. I believe that if we would have been told this the day after we were told to change our offer, the 29th or whatever that day was, we wouldn't even be here right now. I mean, if we were told that Mr. Kessel didn't have the authority to negotiate with us at that point, we wouldn't be here right now.
How long have we had that policy, Mr. Coleen? Do you know, when we passed that?
Best of my recollection, I believe it was... I know it was revised in 2007, but I believe it pre-exists that time as well, maybe as old as 10 years.
I mean, in the past, I've negotiated with Ms. Sullinger. I've negotiated with Mr. Sun. I mean, if we were told Mr. Kessel didn't have the authority to negotiate with us at that time, we would have went to whoever we needed to, and they could have told us, sorry, your offer is no longer acceptable. It's not on our form. It's past the date. We have another offer. We wouldn't be here tonight, Mr. Johnson. I mean...
But the issue for us, Mr. Friedrich, is you're a resident here. You do business with the city, and I understand if you make an offer that's different, it ends up before the commission, and it sounds like those did, but we have a party over here who's in the same line of work that you are, and they understood the policy. the policy. They followed it.
And I totally understand that, but all they would have had to tell us that is on March 29th, not, not on April 16th or April 21st.
I, and, and I, I agree with you there that, and I think they wish they would have too. It would have been a done deal because the offer, the other offer was March 26th.
Yeah, and, and until today, to be honest with you, we thought our offer was getting denied because of item 16. Nothing to do with the timing of the offer.
No, and, and...
That was never conveyed to us till, our attorney spoke with the city attorney today, and we, so, I, I mean...
And I, we, we turned this over to the city attorney too late, you know?
On the, well, on the 21st, I was told that at the planning and zoning after Mr. Kessel said he had met with Mr. Coling the evening of the 20th and said, "The wording of item 16 now voids your offer." It had nothing to do with the timing of the offer.
Well, I'm not sure that that was Mr. Coling's advice. I'm, I'll let him speak for himself, but...
And it might not have been.
But, but I do know that Mr. Coling didn't see everything here until just a few days ago, and I think Mr. Kessel informed Mr. Walker by an email that he had turned it over to Mr. Coling at that point.
Yeah, and I, I received a carbon copy of that email, and we wouldn't have engaged Mr. Chapman as an attorney. I mean, he was defending us on the item 16 thing, nothing on the timing. So, I mean, we wouldn't even have went to the point of getting an attorney involved with the wording issue if we'd have known prior to that that, that it was due to the timing and not the item 16. But we didn't find that out till 4:30 today.
Well, keep in mind, too, from a city perspective, the city's had a lot of land in its inventory going back to the early 80s. I would dare say very few, if any, land sales here before had we had multiple offers that turned out to be full price offers. So, we're plowing some new ground, too. As you pointed out, you know, the land that we sold you over on the east side of a few years ago, we probably didn't even have a price on it, or certainly we accepted, if we did have a price, we accepted less than a full price offer. The market was different, so...
And I agree with, yeah, I agree with that.
This is, this is a little bit new for us also. I'm sure we've, we've learned some lessons here, too, and we probably all have, know the real estate policy a lot better today than we knew it a week ago.
That includes me.
Yep.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything else? All right, we're going to vote on the motion then. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna go to our 5:45 timetable agenda item, and these will be a series of public hearings. Mr. Soren, are you going to help us out on introducing these?
Yes, President Johnson.
And, Mr. Soren, just before you go, on your, commissioners, on your agenda, it has on this, this item 1A, it has ordinance number 1380. It's actually 1381 in your packet, and the one listed as 1381 is actually 1380. So, sorry about that, Mr. Soren.
That's okay. We'll start with the, the first or couple of rezoning requests. Both of them from an R2 to an R3 is the request. The first one on the agenda comes from Mr. Clement. It is the north 129 feet of Lot 8, Block 2, Country Oaks Estate. That map that had the land sale information on it also shows the, the lots for rezoning. This one happens to be on Fifth Avenue West between 26 Streets and 29th Street. It is one lot requesting to go from an R2 to an R3 to build a six-plex on that property. All the properties around this are currently zoned R2 to the west. However, they do have multifamily housing units on it. Planning and zoning did review this request and is recommending approval of the, the rezoning.
For those of us who always need a refresher on zoning, can you give us a basic difference between R2 and R3?
Sure. R2 is a medium density. Typical uses are duplexes, up to four-plex type units. R3 is, is a high-density zoning district. That's where you can get up to the, the apartment complex, 24, 36-unit apartments, those types of structures. With this being a six-unit development that he's planning to put in there would require, it is above the, the four that's allowed by an R2, therefore requiring the R3.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Soren. With that, we declare the public hearing open on this item then. Anyone that wishes to comment for or against may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is there anybody here that'd like to speak to this one? Okay, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, any comments or questions that you'd like to make, or members of the city staff? This is ordinance number 1381. Is there a motion regarding first reading then?
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 1381.
There's a second. We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Soren, you please continue.
The next petition comes from the Hope Family Trust. This is a, another R2 to R3 medium density to high-density request. It is a series of, of eight lots, lots 14, 15, 16, 19, 20, 21, 22, Block 5, Country Oaks Estate, 2nd. This one, once again, is on your map. It's on 10th Avenue West, just north of 21st Street. There is a duplex on the corner of 21st and 10th Avenue West. Century Apartments is directly to, to the west of this property. The intention of, of this request here again is he's planning to build an eight-plex in the area with eight garages for those, along with parking. Planning and zoning did review this one as well. There was some opposition at the meeting or had some questions dealing with drainage and, and things of that nature. But after going through the, the request, they are making the recommendation that we approve the rezoning on this one to an R3 as well. I would point out here, Century Apartments to the west is currently in an R2 zone as well, which makes it a non-conforming use, which is probably something we may need to look at in the, the near future for this area as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soren. So at this time, we'll declare the public hearing open on this item. Again, anyone wishing to comment may do so. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody wish to comment? Declare the public hearing closed. Any comments by commissioners or city staff? Is there a motion regarding first reading of this ordinance?
I'll move that we approve the first reading.
Second.
Ordinance 1382.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing done.
President, Johnson, I believe it's 1380, not 82.
Did you say 82?
I said 82.
Oh. I thought he said 1380, but...
Okay.
Do you change your motion to 13?
I will change my motion to 1380.
Mr. Frenzel, you still second that?
I second it 80.
You, okay. All right, anything else? When we'll vote, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Well, we'll let you continue.
The next series of, of items that we have are all special use permits. The first one comes from Charbonneau Car Center. They are, are requesting a special use permit to build a, or construct a parking lot in an R3-zoned area. It's the south 40 feet and the west 86 feet of Lot 8, and the west 86 feet of Lot 7, Block H Dakota Landing Colonization. I do have a map that's included on this one as well. It's a block west of their, their current showroom is where they are proposing this. There was much debate at planning and zoning over this issue. I believe it started back in February, I believe was the request. Planning and zoning, because of some opposition, did ask them to go back and remarket it for a couple months. They did do that with the property. We heard it, or it came back at the last planning and zoning meeting with, with opposition and a, a, an offer on the property to keep it a residential parcel. Through some of the discussion, there was a contract for deed is how it came about because there was some issues with getting bank financing for them having fears of the, the shape the house was in is my understanding, and the deterioration and the, the ability to bring this back to a residential structure. Through much debate over that issue, particularly in trying to keep this residential property, planning and zoning, there were several members that did go look at it, saw the shape the house was in, and did make the recommendation to the City Commission that we grant a special use permit to construct a, a parking lot in this area.
Mr. Soren, did you say that that's currently zoned R3?
Yes.
I believe most of that downtown area is zoned R3. Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Okay, well, we'll declare the public hearing open. Again, anyone wishing to comment on, on this issue may do so. Come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Mr. President, City Commission, I'm Chuck Peterson. I appreciate the opportunity to ask you to deny this request for a special use permit. We certainly don't fault Charbonneaux's for seeking some additional parking, especially as a result of them building a new building on their current parking lot, but I don't believe that this request actually to allow a special use permit for a commercial parking lot is really an appropriate use of this corner in our residential area. I assume each of you have read the zoning board minutes, and Mr. Soren has kind of explained to you this has had some interesting twists and turns as it went through, but I think it's helpful if I kind of give you the rest of the flavor. I'll, I'll try to be brief. After the initial public hearing, a number of the neighbors objected and suggested the house should be saved, and the board, the zoning and planning board, tabled the matter for 60 days to see if the owners could sell the house to restore it and use it as a residence. Following that hearing, the owners did, and they testified at the second hearing, that they showed the house a number of times, and they were also, there was also an article in the Dickinson Press that quoted them as saying that, you know, "With time and money, the house could be beautiful," and they'd like to see it redone. Even Mr. Charbonneau was quoted as saying, "If something could be done with the house, I'm all for it." With that encouragement, those of us who wanted to make sure this could remain a residence or not have a special use permit for a parking lot, offered our assistance to a young couple, Jeremy and Carrie Davis, who met with the owners of the property, entered into an agreement to purchase the property for $63,000. Since the house is currently not habitable because of the sewer system having to be redone and a couple other things, they couldn't get conventional bank financing, so we worked out some private financing for the purchase of the property. And I then contacted the owners personally, saying that I had the full purchase price amount ready to be paid to them. There's no financing with regard to the owners. It was going to be a financing Jeremy was getting, basically, and his wife. I advised them, I had the full purchase price deposited in my trust account, and I had instructions to pay them as soon as I could review the abstract for the title, and they would sign a warranty deed. The owners actually agreed to have me review the abstract. I reviewed that the next day, which was only three days before the last zoning meeting. I reviewed the abstract. There were no issues. I drafted the warranty deed. It was ready to be signed. I contacted the owners and left them four messages over two days prior to the zoning meeting, asking that they stop in, get the check out of my trust account, sign the deed. It was going to be a, a done deal. Didn't get any response. I was afraid they were out of town. I didn't know what was going on. So we decided, better go to the zoning meeting, and at that time, the owners showed up and said they decided they didn't want to sell it to the Davises as a result of they didn't like the financing arrangement. But we tried to explain to them that that was, there was no financing involved. They got a check for the full amount of the purchase price. In any case, the zoning board concentrated their questions and their opinions, and they went to look at the building and, and the house that's on the property, and they really, in my opinion, just emphasized the fact that they personally felt it couldn't be restored. I, I take a little exception to that. I mean, the same exact thing happened with the house I currently live in, which was going to be made into a parking lot, but there were some people that had a little determination and foresight and saved that house, and, and it's worked out very well for my wife and I. This house can also be saved, but that's really not the issue, I think, that you as a City Commission have to really decide, although it might be a practical aspect of it. We thought it was the issue. Technically, the only issue is whether this lot on the corner between other residences should be allowed to be a commercial parking lot, or whether it should remain as residential and deny the issuance. I think it's, first of all, Jeremy Davis is here. If you have questions for him, he's certainly able to answer any questions you have. He's still interested in trying to make this happen, to make this a residence, but that decision is going to be up to the owners as to whether they want to sell it to him, and that's going to be their call, but we really believe that there is an opportunity to have this house restored. The zoning ordinance that you have in place right now has purposes stated at the beginning of it, and, and I think those are important purposes. The first purpose for a zoning ordinance is to classify the property in a manner that reflects its suitability for specific uses. That decision was made years ago as to how this property should be classified. It's classified as residential, and, and we believe it should remain residential. Another stated purpose is to provide sound, attractive development in the city, and a parking lot on this corner of our tree-lined residential street is not what we would view as sound, attractive zoning. And finally, the, excuse me, the ordinance states its purpose is to encourage compatibility with existing land uses. The existing land uses are clearly residential here. We, we really believe that there is a good opportunity here. Like I say, I don't fault Charbonneaux's for wanting to try to find parking. I think that's, that's something they need to do, but this is not an appropriate use for this particular lot, and we'd ask you to deny the special use permit and kind of avoid the difficult precedent you'd be setting, I think. Any questions for me?
Mr. Frenzel?
You mentioned a purchase agreement that you had with, between the buyer and the seller. Was there actually a signed purchase agreement between sellers and your, and your buyer?
There was an agreement to purchase, there was a verbal agreement between the owners of the property and Jeremy Davis.
But there was no signed...
It was actually delivered to the bank by the owners of the property to be signed, but when the bank didn't follow through with the financing, it did not get signed. There's, we're not talking about enforcing a purchase agreement.
I, I just wanted to understand.
Right.
You didn't have a signed...
Written.
...purchase agreement from the sellers to your buyer?
Not a written purchase agreement, or we probably wouldn't be talking about it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Mr. Peterson, from what I understand, the sale is done, correct?
I have no idea.
I mean, who owns the house now?
I don't, I don't think that technically matters because it's a zoning issue in front of the city council as to what the use can be for the house.
Is...
For the property.
My... My question is, I don't believe the Kellers are out of money at this time if this doesn't go through. I assume that it has been sold, I'm not sure. Maybe someone's here can correct me, I'm not sure if it is sold to Charbonneau's at this time or not, or, who owns that property today?
But Mr. Carson, I don't think that's, I have no idea. I don't care if I own the property, or Kellers own the property, or Charbonneau's own the property. It's the use of that lot that we're here to discuss.
Yeah, I under, I understand.
I don't know what the transa, if the transaction has been completed, I have no idea.
Right. For clarification, just so we all know what we're talking, where we're talking about here. This home that the Kellers are selling, that what we're talking about, sits on the corner.
Correct.
Okay. There's another little residence right to the east of it.
That's correct.
Okay. And that owner has not waited?
His president here tonight to talk to you about that.
Okay. My next question then is, Charbonneau's new building that they're constructing is right next to that, correct?
Across the alley.
Okay, it is the alley. So we have a residential, a small residential right in the middle of what could be a new and a parking lot.
Yes.
And so I'm familiar with all three areas. The four corners are actually, straight to the south is a daycare, correct?
Yes, it's a residence used at the daycare.
Southeast, southwest is a doctor, northwest is another individual, okay, I understand.
That's correct.
My concern is, is a residence in the middle of a parking lot again and new business going up.
Mr. President, I also, it's really not a question for Mr. Peterson, but it's, I was under the impression that if the sellers had a buyer for that property as R3, they could not issue a special use permit. Am I correct?
You mean a legal?
Right. Because a special use permit was only going to be given to the sellers if they could not sell it as R3.
Mr. Coling, care to comment on that?
I'm not quite sure that I understand the question. But the special use permit was applied for by Charbonneau in order to create a parking lot on this lot. The ownership of the property is really immaterial to what, to your decision about whether or not a special use permit ought to be granted on this. The only issue under our zoning code and under our special use permit procedure is what you view the proper, yeah, highest and best use of this property to be, consistent with all of our zoning regulations. So I think I concur with Mr. Peterson's comments that the ownership issue is not really before you. It's just a question of what you view the best use of this property to be.
Okay, but then maybe you didn't understand me. If the, if they had a buyer for the R3 property, which would be the Davis buyers or Mr. Peterson's buyers, then the planning and zoning actually should not have issued a special use permit, right?
I think at the initial planning and zoning meeting, there was opposition from the neighbors regarding the special use permit. And the zoning commission encouraged the parties to see if the property could be preserved as a residential property. And at the second planning and zoning commission, there was a buyer, as Mr. Peterson notes, a buyer was presented for the property. But the planning and zoning commission didn't feel that that was feasible and recommended the special use permit be granted. Whether or not they should have done that or shouldn't, I really can't speak to. But as a legal matter, there was no obligation for them to deny the special permit under the circumstances that we've got here.
Okay. I was at that meeting too. And I know the question was asked, do the sellers have the right to sell to whomever they want? Yes, they do in an R3. But for a special use permit to be issued, then that went beyond that. So that's what I'm trying to say. They did have a buyer for the R3 to keep it as residential. So what he's asking for is that we don't pass this, you know, we deny it, so.
It's really of no concern to us who the present owner sold the property to. As both Mr. Coling and Mr. Peterson have stated, it's just for us to decide whether or not it's appropriate to issue that special use permit. And it's, right now, it's not a concern to us whether we think the property can be restored or not. It only becomes a concern to us if it becomes a safety hazard, a health hazard.
I think that's a very important issue, Mr. President. I think that that is an issue that maybe could be addressed in the future and maybe should be addressed in the future if it is, it becomes an issue. But right now, that's not the concern. But that seems to be the focus of where the zoning board was.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Steiner?
Mr. Peterson, you said the individual that owned that home in the middle of this here is here. Would he like to come up and say something? I'd like to. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name's Tiffany Kohler, I live at 431 First Street West. And I'd rather you not pass it. I don't want a parking lot on one side and the alley in the building on the next.
You're in the home that's right between the Charbonneau building that's under construction and the lot in question?
Yes.
Okay. And you're here to speak against the special use permit?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have questions or comments for her? And could we have your name again?
Tiffany Kohler.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak to this issue?
Mr. President and fellow commissioners, Terry Seville. I live at 125 Fifth Avenue West, which is about a half a block north and across the street from the property in question. There's not a lot more for me to add from what Chuck Peterson has said and what Tiffany Kohler said. Just some notes that I've made for myself. I'm opposed to the special use permit. I believe it would have an adverse effect on the use and enjoyment for present homeowners and would decrease home values and possibly remove a historic home from a neighborhood of historic homes. When I look at Dr. Olean's house at southwest of this one, 41 Fifth Avenue West, and Chuck Peterson's home, 209 Fifth Avenue West, Donnie Dyer's home at 309 Fifth Avenue West, I know that there are people who value these unique and historic homes in Dickinson. They show what can be achieved in restoring and enhancing historic homes. I'm also impressed, not just with the homes, but with what American State Bank has done with the old bank building downtown. I'm appreciative of what the city commission and all they have done so that developers can preserve and restore the Elks Building. It shows that these old, unique buildings are valued. They add character and value to the city of Dickinson. You're already considering what the value, or what could happen to the value of Tiffany Kohler's home if this was made into a parking lot. And the other thing, and I had addressed this with the zoning board, and I will address it here too, it might be a little repetitious. But what kind of a message do we want to send to present homeowners and prospective homeowners in R3-zoned areas? That if you have a home or a neighbor has a home that is allowed to become in disrepair, it becomes fair game for a special use permit and/or a parking lot down the road. I don't think that's the message the city wants to send to homeowners, present and future. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Seville. Any comments or questions for Mr. Seville? Thank you. Anybody else like to comment?
Mr. President and fellow commissioners, Terry DeVorek. I am part-owner of Charbonneau Car Center. And I guess we do own the property now. We closed on the property last Monday. We went into this, it was January after the snowstorm, we went into this and Ken was shoveling out his, Mr. Keller was shoveling out his driveway. And I said, you know, what's going on with the house? And he said, it's for sale. So after negotiation, we had, we had came up to a price. And of course, we filed for the special use permit back in February. At that point, the zoning committee denied the claim because they felt there wasn't enough time for people to possibly purchase the home. No one really had, I gave them kind of an educated guess on when the house went up for sale, which was in June. And I was correct. Levon put the house up for sale in June, they put a for sale sign. So I guess at that time, that's why the zoning committee didn't grant us the special use permit. So we agreed that we would put it back up for sale, or, excuse me, the Kellers would put it up for sale till the next, two meetings prior after that. The, the house was sold. I, in fact, I, Levon Keller had called me and said, you know, we have a buyer for the house. And it's like, okay, so we're, we had given him some earnest money. I said, well, bring it over on Monday, it would have been the following Monday. And I had gotten a call that Monday, and she said, are you still interested in the property? I said, of course we are. It had fell through because they weren't happy with a contract for deed on the, on the house. And as Mr. Peterson had stated, they did have the money, but I believe it was still a contract for deed. It wouldn't be conventional financing through the bank. So that's when we became interested in the property again. We do have nine signatures from resident homeowners and also business owners. You guys are all familiar, everyone's familiar with our property. We're a block off a third. We're next to a funeral home, a daycare, a church, a school, another car dealership, a bank. I know there's reasonings for R3s and R2s, I understand that. But Dickinson is changing, times change. If you drive by our business, I don't feel that, or any business that has a parking lot in a residential zone, they're all over town, whether it's a church, a school, a business. And I don't see that they cause havoc, especially if the owners of that property treat it with respect, and I feel that we would. So I guess I, I know there was some opposition on that from some of the owners. So I do want to clarify that. But also, some of the comments that were made, that I do agree. I think it would be nice to see that home restored. I mean, it is beautiful, or I believe one day it was beautiful in its time. But we really didn't pursue the property till we found out the condition of it. So I believe one of the city engineers, Mr. Zent, had gone in there and found out of the sewer damage and the other asbestos and the mold and other contaminants with the lead paint. I too want to see downtown more, you know, prestigious and develop it in the right manner. But there, I don't know that the Davises and maybe the other purchasers or buyers know the total amount that it would take to fix up that structure. If they do buy it, is it going to sit another ten years, another twelve years, fifteen years? What's it going to do? Putting a parking lot there would better first and fourth and third. You can drive by during the day, it's dangerous. We're taking, I guess, or we're willing to put an investment into this property, we can put up to nineteen parking spots there. It's going to be employee parking. There's going to be nothing for sale. It's strictly employee parking. That would take, you know, nineteen cars right off the street right there. So I guess I'm asking that you approve the motion, or not motion, but approve the special use permit for that reason. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would you take some questions? If we have any questions for you?
I have a question for him.
Mm-hmm.
Terry, how would you feel if you had two parking lots, one on each side of you, and your home was the only one in the middle?
I guess, you know, looking at other properties around town, there's properties around town that are that way. There's people that have purchased property for Mr. Seville's house, in fact. She, he has a parking lot in his backyard. I don't see that he would, or whoever would, maybe if he put his house up for sale, that someone would come in and give him a lower dollar amount because he has a parking lot in his backyard. In fact, if you asked him, I would say he would agree with me. Having the church and the parking lot in his backyard does not lower his value. I don't think it would lower the value of her house either.
Well, I would tend to disagree, but that's just my opinion. The other thing is, I've had a lot of calls and people have written concern about us, how we're moving forward with our city and changing zoning and whatever. I think that it's important that we stay, you know, with residential where it is residential if there's a possible chance of either rebuilding the home or building brand-new. That's my opinion. I just feel that it's a very nice area with a lot of older homes. And I don't know, I guess I would have to agree with Ms. Kohler. If I would have bought a home and then all of a sudden found out that I'm going to have a parking lot on the other side of me as well, she probably would want to sell her house too. And I don't know if, unless it went to someone that was going to put commercial there, she probably wouldn't get the value back.
From my understanding, anywhere in downtown right now, residential property, whether it's R, I guess it would have to be R3, people have gotten more money, I would say, than what their property is actually. If you were to appraise her house or appraise the house that, the property that we bought, I'm assuming what we're paying or what she would get in the future would be well above what her property is worth. So to your question, I guess, I feel that her property would be worth more in this case. And I agree with keeping residential, but they're a block off a third. How much more downtown do you get than your street off a Third Avenue? That's the main, you know, north and south in Dickinson. So, and again, I'm not here to, it's an eyesore the way it is. That's what I'm getting at, it's an eyesore. For someone to go in there and say they're going to spend forty or fifty thousand dollars and then move in and make it livable, I just don't see that. I just, I could see that house sitting there another ten or fifteen years unless someone's going to come in with a big checkbook and start redoing the house. So whoever Mr. Davis's backers are, I hope they're prepared to come up with a lot of funds. Or if Mr. Davis couldn't get the loan from the bank to get, to begin with, to buy the home for $63,000, who's going to give him the money to spend, to put the money into the home?
There, I think there's different ways we could look at it too, that they only have so much time to restore it. Kind of like the old Elks Building, you know? You have this much time, and if you don't, then it goes back up for sale for someone else. And that's my opinion again.
Again, with, you know, the whole reason we went into this was because of the parking. We certainly don't want to move Charbonneau Car Center. We feel it's an asset to be downtown Dickinson. We have lots of customers that work, whether it's TMI, We have lots of customers that work, whether it's, it's TMI, the banks, consolidated. They like us being down there. They walk to work. It, it's convenient for us to shuttle our customers around. I guess, you know, for, for us to grow and to provide the business that our customers need and want, we need more parking. You know, we, we want our business to grow as, as anybody would in Dickinson. But it's, it's also, again, it's an investment on our part. Our, our employees can park on the street. You know, it's, it's, it's not as this, if this parking lot is going to better Charbonneau Car Center. It's, it's, we're trying to better the, the city, the parking, the daycare, the church, the funeral home. So it's not like we're going to take 20 cars and go put it, put them over there for sale. It's, it's employee parking. So that's, that's what I'm looking at. We're trying to better downtown by that.
Thank you, Mr. DeVorek.
Thanks.
Anybody else wish to comment?
President Johnson, fellow commissioners, I'm, my name is D.J. Charbonneau. I'm here, I, I couldn't tell you exactly how many times, but I mean, since our February meeting in the paper, there must have been three or four different instances where people have came to you regarding downtown parking, issues, problems, it was on the front page of the paper. It's not just going to be a parking lot that we want to put there. I mean, you know, I understand the lady who lives in between the new shop and the parking lot. It's going to have a vinyl fence around it. We're going to have trees. There's going to be shrubs. So it's not just going to be a parking lot with nothing around it. I mean, I don't know that it's a huge difference if you've got a house in the middle or with a, with a vinyl fence around it, or if you have a parking lot with a vinyl fence around it. You know, so I mean, that, if you drive by, I mean, there's cars parked up and down the street. I mean, I couldn't tell you how many accidents there are on the, on Fourth there that comes down, that runs in front of the funeral home, you know, towards M&amp;H. Because we got cars parked on all, on all parts of the street. People pull out, they don't see somebody coming, they get hit. You know, we're not trying to detriment the downtown area. I mean, we're just trying to have a spot for us to, to park cars and when I, you know, as businesses grow, I mean, I think that change happens. I mean, you know, when my dad sold out, that's part of the reason why he sold out is because he was 65 years old and didn't want change. And I mean, as times change, businesses change, I mean, you know, we did, we're just looking for a little bit more parking. And, you know, in order for us to grow, or Dickinson to grow, I mean, I feel things like that need to happen at times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment? Anybody else? We'll declare the public hearing closed then. I'd invite comments either from city staff or commissioners.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
Transitions between various types of zoning are difficult. They can really be imperfect. This one's probably going to be imperfect. But they have to happen. There has to be a line drawn somewhere. To me, the most important thing I don't think has been said tonight, and that, that is that there are a lot of homeowners who have built homes and improved homes relying on the fact that the R3 designation is going to be where it is. And that's, to me, the most important principle in all this. I, I don't fault Charbonneaux, as everybody else has said it too. I don't fault them for trying to get more parking. But I'm ready to offer a motion that we deny the special use permit.
Okay, Mr. Jackson has moved the motion to deny the special use permit. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second. Again, we'll continue then with discussion. Anybody else wish to comment? If not, we'll, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion to deny carries. We'll go to item 2B. Mr. Soren, would you introduce that also?
Yes, President Johnson. This is a, another special use permit request from FMWS Constructors. This one is in, it's Lot 1, Block 11, Hart River Second Subdivision and Lot 1, Block 2, Stang subdivision. It's located on Fifth Street Southwest. The request came, it is an R1 zoned area, and the request came to build duplexes on those two lots, meaning one per lot, so it'd be four additional units in that area. Planning and zoning heard this at the last planning and zoning meeting and is recommending the special use permit to build duplexes in an R1 district. R1 is low-density, single-family designation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Soren. So we'll declare the public hearing open on this item. Anyone wishing to comment may do so. Just step to the podium and we'll hear your comments. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this issue? Anybody? There's no one that wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. And we would invite comments by commissioners and/or city staff. Mr. Soren, I have a question. Are there any restrictions that came with this special use permit recommended by the?
Not, not with this one particularly, no. They did mention that their, their intention is to build $190,000 units. That's the type, size facility. The developer of, of the Stang addition, I believe, is one of the, the partners or has an interest in this. So, you know, he came across that they're, they're fully intending to put some pretty nice units in there. There was an individual that, that came and questioned in opposition of it, thinking he was getting an apartment complex similar to what was across the street, I think, originally. And when he found out what type of facility they were looking to build, I think it satisfied his concerns. But they didn't have any stipulations on this one.
All right. Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second, other discussion. Hearing done then, we'll vote on the motion. Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
The next one we have came from Carly Warner. It is a special use permit to operate a group daycare in a R1 zone. The location is Lot 9, Block 6, College Edition. It's directly north of Frankie's on the west side, right on, on State Avenue. The group daycare would, is licensed for 12 people. That's how many, or 12 kids, that's how many she would operate out of this facility. Planning and zoning is recommending approval of the special use permit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soren. At this time, we'll declare the hearing open regarding this issue. Anyone wishing to comment may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anybody that wishes to comment? Mr. Soren, I have a question. I, I read the planning and zoning minutes. I got the impression that there is already a daycare operating out of there, except it's for like seven children?
She's operating a family daycare currently, which is allowed, which is seven.
Out of, out of that facility?
Correct.
Looking at the property, a concern that I had is that the access to it is from State's Avenue. And I was concerned about pickup and drop-off there. That's, that's a busy street. I think it's going to get even busier. Were issues like that raised at planning and zoning?
It was talked about. She mentioned parking in the alley as well as on the, the street on the north side of the property that they'd be able to access. I believe she's got a couple of parking spots at the property as well that she, she felt that she was able to, to accommodate the numbers of people that she had coming.
It's a small driveway. It will hold two cars. I also understand from reading the minutes that the basement is rented out to another party and then the main floor is used for the daycare center. I was kind of assuming, since this was on a, I was over, I drove by there on a Sunday, both parking spots were taken. And since I don't think this daycare operates on the weekend, that I, I assumed it was the downstairs tenant that had those parking spots.
She had indicated that she would have those parking spots available at our planning
The entrance is on the west side. I, I have a feeling people will either pull up on State's Avenue or try to park in the driveway, but I think they'll be parking on State's Avenue. I don't, I drove through the alley. I don't think they're going to do that. And I, I'm not so sure they'll park on the north side there. That would be the safest, but it's also the furthest to walk.
I would agree with your assessment. Typically, people take the, the shortest and most convenient route, that's for sure.
So I think, you know, if, if they go from seven to 12 children, we're apt to see street parking there as, as they're loading and unloading. And again, it's a busy street. And I think even though there's a lower speed limit on that portion of the street, I'm, I'm not so sure it, it's fully complied with.
Do we know what the street width is there on State Avenue?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
It's, it's significantly wider than a residential street though, as I recall.
I, yes.
You've got a 140-foot lot there, so there's lots of parking on State Avenue. And I think there is more width, which I think will help that situation.
Mr. President, I think she was just, she's only going to have seven children, right? Or was it up to 12?
She has, she has seven now. She is
Going up to 12.
Getting a group license. Because it's a residential property, that allows her to have 12 by our codes currently. So she can get licensed for 12 at that location.
Are, is the daycare provider present? I don't have any other comments. I know we need, I guess I do have more comments. I know we need additional daycare, but I'm, I'm hesitant to vote for this just because of the parking issue. But if there are no other comments, we declare the public hearing closed and commissioners can continue commenting and discussing the issue. Is there a motion regarding this?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Frenzel?
Who does we deny the request?
We have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Other, further discussion?
If she can address the drop-off point, is this something that obviously the City Commission can reconsider? If she can get her customers to park on the north side for drop-off, would that change the situation up for us to be comfortable with it? You know, I under, I understand what you're saying about the traffic and so on, it's just, she just may come back and say, you know, if I instruct everyone to park on the north side.
You know, if, if, if her home, if the front entrance were facing to the south or to the north.
You know what would get done?
I'd, I'd feel a lot better about this. But, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Soren. I think people are going to take the shortest distance, the one that's most convenient. I think generally, they're going to be coming down State's Avenue. And, and that's, that's where they're going to park. If they end up, if, if they're heading south and park on the west side, then that means they have to cross the street. Even if they're parked on the east side and facing north, they still have to get outside their car and kind of step into the traffic flow. I just don't, I, I don't think it's a good situation. And maybe with seven children and the two spots on the driveway, that works with seven children. But if you have 12 children, and I'm, I suspect there will be parents there trying to, you will have times when there will be more than two cars delivering children or picking children up. It's, it's a busy street. But I, but I don't think it's very safe.
Are we aware of any safety issues now, any incidents that there have been, or are we aware of anything like that?
I'm not aware of any.
I don't know. I, I guess I still think we have seven there now, going to 12. I think we all agree there's a need for more daycare, aye?
Other comments? All right, well, we'll vote the, the motion before is the motion to deny. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mrs. Stookard?
No.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Special use permit is denied.
The last item we have is a
Mr. Soren, I, I just make one other comment. I, I think, you know, it would have been helpful had a representative of the daycare been here to kind of help with some of these issues too. That could very well influence the vote. Okay, we'll let you continue.
The last item that we have is a special use permit for TMJ Properties. This is Lot 12, Block 29, State Edition. This is on the, the corner of 23rd Avenue West and First Street. It's on the northeast corner of that intersection. The request is for a special use permit to build a multifamily unit, or an eight-plex in a limited commercial zoned area. This area, a couple of years ago, we had looked at several lots along First Street. This area, a couple of years ago, we had looked at several lots along First Street and rezoned them to an R3. Initially, this was one of the lots that was included in that rezone. The property owners at the time had requested that they thought they had a business that was going to be going in there, an opportunity for that, and elected to pull out of that rezoning request with the understanding that they could request a special use permit to do what they're looking to do right now. So, planning and zoning, when they looked at this, I guess realizing that a couple of years ago, the intent was to get it rezoned to an R3 and at the time, they didn't elect to do that. They felt it still fell within the intent of the original direction that they were looking for the development in the area and is recommending that we grant a special use permit for this complex.
Thank you, Mr. Soren. At this time, we'll declare that public hearing open. Again, anyone that wishes to comment on this issue may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody wish to comment? There's no one that wishes to comment. We'll declare the public hearing closed, invite comments by city commissioners or city There's no comments. Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll move we approve the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion?
I just have one question, since Mr. Clement is here. Could you come up and answer a question? I had some, I had some calls...
You're the new commissioner of the territorial, ma'am.
Okay. I had some calls today from the people that live on the other side of the street where the townhouses went up, concerns about things being parked on the grounds already, like boats and whatever, and they felt it was devaluing their properties. Do you know whose properties or whose boats those are and why they're there at this time?
I believe that's some residents that live right to the north of this lot and they're parking them on that lot. We didn't have any objection to that, but once, once there's an apartment building there, they won't, they won't have to look at those anymore.
So they actually belong to the people that are in the townhouses right now?
And there's some condominium units right to the north. I don't believe they're going to be there that long. There's a trailer that, one of the people that are in conjunction with the construction, he's got one, a trailer there, a couple trailers there, but they won't be there as soon as the building's built.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, Mike Commissioners? Okay, we have the motion to approve. There's no other comments, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We're back to Tab 4, cell phone policy. And this, this would be the second reading of this policy. Mr. Kessel or Mr. Cohen, is there anything else you'd like to add here? We've had a report on this. We've also had first reading on it.
President Johnson, there's been no changes made to the policy as it's been presented after first reading. If there's any questions, I'll certainly entertain those.
Any comments or questions here? I'd invite the public, if you have any comments regarding this proposed ordinance, you may comment just by stepping to the podium, stating your name. We'll hear your comments. No one from the public? Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the final reading of ordinance 1379.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to Tab 5, Public Safety.
President Johnson, Commissioners, as stated in the agenda memo that you have, the 2010 Assistance to Firefighters Grant application period is now open and this is the grant process that we have been using in an attempt to help us fund the replacement of our self-contained breathing apparatus, our air packs, which we must do by the end of 2012. It is the only grant application, it is the only grant opportunity available to us that would help us fund this purchase. It is a matching grant. It requires a 5% match based on population and because it does require a match, 5% would be approximately an $8,800 commitment that is not figured in the budget. Wouldn't come, it wouldn't happen until the 2011 timeframe, however. It's not a quick turnaround grant, but because it does require a match, I'm here before you to ask your permission to proceed with the application.
Thank you, Chief Seavock. You've heard his request. Do you have any comments or questions for him? And is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to get the grant, apply for the grant, whatever.
Thank you.
Approval to proceed.
Thank you.
That's a motion. We haven't voted yet. We have a second. Any discussion? Would you propose to take this from Chief Rummel's budget if you're successful?
If at all possible, that would be just fine.
Well, I think we'll proceed to vote then, so, Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Tab 6, Public Works Engineering. You're doing double duty to Mr. Soren.
Hopefully, we'll get done here shortly. The first item I have is a final plat of the Schwab Edition. This is a lot, it's a one-lot, one-block subdivision just east of town in the limited industrial area. It's a one-acre, just over one-acre lot, right along the existing Highway 10, kind of cleaning up an unplatted portion between the subdivision to the south and the highway. We are, I guess, recommending approval of this plat and anticipate that to the west of this, we'll be cleaning up some of that unplatted area in the near future as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soren. You've heard his introduction and his recommendation. Any comments or questions for him? Is there a motion regarding this resolution? Move the approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Under my reports, I've got a few items to go over. The first one is to make you aware that on April 23rd, bids were opened for our 2010 Urban Roads project. There was one bidder on it. It was Northern Improvement with a bid of $1,874,270. I believe our engineer's estimate on it was just over $1.9 million, so we got what we anticipate to be a fairly good bid for that project. The city's estimated portion of that's going to be $394,119. As soon as we get DOT's approval to award this, we'll be bringing this back to the City Commission for approval. If there's any questions regarding that, I'd happy to try and answer those.
You want no action now?
No, just reporting on some of these items. The next item, we did have a state bid for a 6x4, 7400 international truck. This is a unit that we budgeted between the water department and the street department. We had it budgeted of $85,000. We did have some issues with the bid. One of the main issues that came back was an emission standards change that added $6,000 to the cost of the truck. Another issue was the box on the truck. I believe we had estimated that about $6,000 or $7,000 below what the actual cost for that came in, putting this unit over budget by $16,000. We are evaluating it, Mr. Rapp and myself, and anticipating that we'll be bringing it back to the City Commission for approval. There are some concerns that there may be some additional emission standards and some other things that are only going to drive the cost of this unit up and so we're looking at it, but we're feeling at this point, it's looking like it's going to be in our best interest to go ahead and try and acquire this truck this year. Through the street department, we do have a couple of items that came in low on some bids that I think we'll be able to cover with that excess money, the costs of our share of the overruns and Mr. Rapp, I believe, feels he'll be able to handle his additional costs as well to do that. So, that one, we'll probably bring him back at the next meeting for action, but if there's any questions or concerns at this point, I'd certainly take those.
What is this truck used for and is it replacing an existing piece of equipment?
It is replacing one of our units. I don't know if Mr. Rapp knows what his is used for, but for us, it'd be used for snow removal, normal street maintenance, things of that nature.
And the unit you're replacing is how old or, you know, how many miles?
I don't have the actual unit number here, so unfortunately, I apologize, I don't have that information. I don't know if Mr. Rapp happens to know that off the top of his head either. Certainly can have that at the next meeting.
I guess you're probably looking for a little feedback from commissioners here, so anybody have an opinion, how they're feeling about this right now?
Well, I think that the need is going to continue for inventory and the fact that you may be able to find other bids that came in for, will we save some money that we comply to this one? You know, I'd be in favor of that person. I think we should go ahead with the truck.
Thank you, Mr. Frenzel. Anybody else want to offer some feedback? Running some trucks in the business I'm associated with, I've also heard that there's more emission standards coming up that are adding cost to vehicles, so I think the point here of buying this before those standards change again is a good, valid point. Is that enough feedback for you?
Gives me a direction, that's for sure. Planning and zoning meeting minutes, if there's anything in those, I'm not going to go through them. I think we had several of the issues tonight that are part of those, but if there's any questions, I'd be certainly happy to try and answer those for you. The last item, if I could...
I'm sorry. Sure. Mr. President, with respect to the planning and zoning minutes, I'd like to say a couple or three things. When I read through them, I'm not sure that we all realize just how much residential development we're approving this spring. I tried to do a quick count and it's really crude, but when I count the number of residential lots that are being approved right now or lots that are being sold by us or by the county, conservatively, I come up with about 1,100 housing units. I think maybe eight or 900 lots, but when you consider the R2 and the R3, I think we've probably got, conservatively, 1,100 housing units. I think if you add the other sporadically undeveloped lots in town, we've probably got 1,300, 1,400, 1,500 housing units prepared and that doesn't count the two significant mobile home courts we have and the area in the southeastern portion of our community that's set aside for manufactured housing. The growth is really exciting and it's really good. We're welcoming a lot of new families, we're welcoming new businesses, and we want to continue to welcome them. It's a good thing, but I am finding myself more and more concerned that we keep a good handle on the development of these properties, especially the significant major subdivisions. I have a few concerns, too, that maybe we're not communicating enough with our own Planning and Zoning Commission, maybe county zoning or county commission itself in the ETZ, the extraterritorial area. I really think it'd be invaluable for our board, city staff probably, planning and zoning members to engage in some philosophical discussion about some of the issues that are coming before us, before those issues get here. There are three or four things that I'd like to point out specifically that I really think we need to be developing policy before they get here. The first one is annexation, because we're going to have annexation questions before us and I really think it'd be helpful if we had some policy so that we can rely on that policy, so the planning and zoning can rely on that policy about annexation before it gets here. The other thing that's going to happen is that we will probably see strip commercial and industrial development between here and the Dunn County line, probably the entire way within the next couple of years. If we're okay with that, then it's easy, we don't have much to do, but if we think there maybe should be something else other than four, five, or six miles of strip development, we need to address it now and we're going to have to partner with the county to do that. The other thing I see happening is that, you know, we've used impact fees very well for what I'd call local or neighborhood extension of infrastructure. We're going to have issues, whether it's with storm sewer or pumping stations or whatever, that, you know, the use of special assessments is going to come before us and it might just help if we talk about that before we get a request. As to the planning and zoning minute, the minutes and specifically some of the items, a couple of things that I want to point out, if you look at Item 2 and Item 5 in those minutes, those are both major subdivisions. I'm going to suggest, and, you know, I have no problem with subdivisions, but I'm going to suggest that before those plats are filed, before they leave our city engineer's office, that the developer has to submit a detailed development plan. Now, that's all work that he has to do, that a developer has to do anyway, but we need to see what the sequencing is going to be. We need to see the concept, the conceptual infrastructure design. We need to see the timing of things. I'd like to see some kind of indication about how impact fees are intended to be used. This is going to give our city staff more of a tool to keep a good handle on those subdivisions. If you look at Item 8, it's a proposal for industrial development in southeast Dickinson. My feelings are right now that I'm going to vote against that. I just don't see hemming us in in another quadrant of our city with industrial. I don't see routing industrial traffic that's likely going to go north and west right through the middle of our city. I just don't think that this is the place to be doing an industrial development. I bring up these things now because I think it's only fair that, in a spirit of communication, that we try to make those feelings known and I don't know if the four of you agree with me or not, but those are my feelings. So I just think that we've got to be having more of this discussion. I hope that we can set policy on some of this stuff before we get a specific request and if we don't talk about it now, it'll be more... And if we don't talk about it now, it'll be more difficult.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I think each point you raised is a, a valuable point. And Mr. Soren, I don't think you need to respond to his points right now unless you would like to, but in the not-too-distant future, I think you do have to come back and, and, and give a response to the issues that Mr. Jackson's raised here. I, I suspect you probably concur with most of what he said.
I do agree with, with much of what Mr. Jackson had, had just stated. And there are a lot of those issues in front of us, and, and there are some, the annexation one is, is a big one with some of these developments that are right next to the city limits. What are our intentions? I believe it's the right thing to do, to annex them in, make sure we have the, the proper fire protection, water, sewer, streets as we're, we're moving along. I, I think it's important that we continue to do that. It gets a lot more difficult the, the farther out of town with the, some of the subdivisions that we, we deal with. There are some challenges in that area. Industrial development, it's a big issue right now. We do have the one on the southeast part of town, there's proposals just north of town as well, and, and I think some of that is what Mr. Jackson's referring to as we, we go north. Do we want to continue to see just strip industrial development continue all the way north, or would we like to, to, to head that off? So, some real issues in front of us, questions that, that we're going to be, be challenged with, I guess certainly, we'll be tasked with those and how do we handle those and bring those in front of the City Commission.
Do we have a, an annexation policy, either in ordinance or otherwise?
I'm not aware of a specific policy. There's procedures for annexation that are in place, but I don't believe we have an annexation policy in place.
And right now, when, when you're dealing with these major residential developments, do you ask them to submit a detailed development plan to you?
We haven't been asking them to submit a detailed one. We have been asking them for their plans, how much they're planning to do, how are they going to get the water sewer in, you know, what are their phasing steps that they're planning to do with the development? Most of the developers we've worked with, that's worked pretty well, but up until now, we've not had the huge developments coming in, so I'm not sure if they're planning to develop at all at once. Most of them are typically trying to start in a corner and get that developed and move forward from that direction, but, but we have not had a, a detailed.
You, you probably have done that informally, but I, I, I would tend to agree with Mr. Jackson that it perhaps should be much more formal now and, and submitted in writing than to your office. I think that's, that's a good idea. And then you do have a record and you do have a plan.
Correct.
And, and I know his, his concern is that, especially in these larger ones, that the development is in an orderly, well-thought-out process and it isn't in four different corners of the, of the property. That becomes, of course, very expensive to the city to maintain, so. And that kind of leads right into, you know, the next item. I mean, we've, we've, we talked in a previous meeting about you've got a lot of workload in that area now, and, and I have to expand our staff, and so you've got some comments that you want to, to make regarding.
Correct. That directly leads into, to the next issue, which is, you know, an inspector slash planner position, not sure of a title exactly, but, but with the, the development we've got going on, and it's, you know, going to move forward, I believe, for, for some time, it's not, it's kind of pushed the issue maybe and brought it to a head. Not that we didn't have some of these concerns or issues in the past, but I think it's definitely exaggerating them right now. You know, good example, as you'll see at the next meeting, with our code enforcement report, I think we've got three times the, the permits out right now as we had last year at this time, you know, up to thirty-five. So we are looking at, at the possibility of a planner-inspector, you know, looking at our, our permit fees to see if that'll be something that could cover the additional cost for someone in, in that type of position, and looking to see if we can get that in the, the 2011 budget. One of the things we're doing currently because of the workload is, is we're, we're actively looking for a licensed plumber that maybe we can get on staff through the, the summer months, seasonal position, to help us with some of the, the inspections that we've got coming up. Just, that's kind of a short-term fix, hoping that we can figure out some long-term things through some of this review process that we're going through.
Just as a little feedback, you know, on, on the additional staff, if, if you can come up with a, a proposal that's acceptable to, to the commission, I for one wouldn't be opposed to amending this year's budget and starting that position sooner. I mean, I'm, if, if we can move faster, I, I don't, I wouldn't personally be in favor of making you wait until 2011.
Okay.
And I saw some heads shaking up and down over here, so I.
Yeah, I, I was going to suggest the same thing, and I, you know, I have a hunch that you guys probably are feeling right now that you want the whole position yourself. I think at one time, there was some discussion about approaching the county to share a position, and I really see some value in that, but for, for our greater community, I see some value in that, if the county's interested. But if, if we think we need that entire position ourselves, then so be it. So be it.
Well, that's very good feedback. If, if I could, I do have a couple other items that I, I don't have on the agenda, just kind of a heads up. We did start, start our Millan overlay project today on, on third, fourth, and fifth, so we've got that project underway. We do have a couple of requests for proposals on some water main replacement for some engineering services, as well as construction engineering services on our urban roads project. We've, we've got some advertisements out. So in the near future, those couple of engineering agreements I'll be bringing in front of the commission as well with some recommendations. But a couple of things going on, we have started our lift station on, up at Lincoln with the, the force main under Sims, and I believe the Washington Fourth, additional of Sixteenth Avenue is expected to start this week as well.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions for Mr. Soren? All right. Well, we're all ready to tab seven. Public Works, Mr. Rapp.
I don't know if you want to make this an all-nighter, I can read all thirty-three pages, but we're not going to do that. What I have for you tonight is just a report, City Dickinson Soloways Municipal Landfill Permit Comes Due September eighth of 2010. We're in the process of compiling all the information that we have to submit to the North Dakota Department of Health for renewal of that application. It's a fairly detailed application, requires all the legal documents and descriptions along with the landfill information required, that we're meeting all of our compliance reports. The only change that we'll have is I want to thank Mr. Soren for finding that we were missing one legal document that kind of explains a little bit more what the landfill sits on. If you look at the area photos and stuff, it actually looks like the documents we had that were actually operating outside of land that's owned by the City of Dickinson, and Mr. Soren was able to find that document at the courthouse, and I want to thank him for that, but that'll be the only change you'll see to this permit between now and when we submit it for approval by the City Commission. We will be required to submit a five thousand dollar application fee along with that permit. That five thousand dollars is not budgeted for 2010. It's one of those things, we don't have a choice to do, it was overlooked when that budget was put together last year and stuff, so that will be requiring approval. But the only big change is the City Dickinson landfill does follow underneath the new greenhouse gas rules that came into effect beginning in 2010. We're below right now the detection limit, so we don't have to report those, but we're going to be, in the near future, be required to do some of the monitoring stuff with some of the greenhouse gas comes off that landfill, both in methane and carbon dioxide, so that'll be some things we'll have to be addressing in the future from a regulatory standpoint. But like I said tonight, it's just for your information, if you've got any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, or if there's comments in between now and probably the next meeting, you can get those to me, and if not, then we'll be asking for approval probably at the upcoming City Commission meeting. Once the state has it, there will be a thirty-day comment period that'll be posted by the North Dakota Department of Health where the public has an opportunity to comment on the landfill, and then once that comment period's done, then they'll reissue the permit.
All right. Any? Just get it right.
I know at one time, I had the occasion to hear the Health Department really compliment you and your staff in the City of Dickinson about the way the landfill was run. Do they still feel that way?
Yes, and I can't take any credit for that, Commissioner Jackson. That belongs to the staff at the Baylor Building and the staff at the landfill. They do a fantastic job.
But we still have that kind of a reputation.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you.
All right. Tab eight. Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commissioners. First tab, first item I have for you is the Dickinson Urban Forestry Letter. They have submitted and gone on record with their recommendations regarding the public hearings and discussion regarding downtown parking. You have held at least three public hearings on this matter. I think it's appropriate that city staff provide you with recommendations. As you've heard today, we are busy, and I hope that you indulge us for another meeting or two, and we hope to have that recommendation to you by June on downtown parking.
Yeah, so Commissioners, if you have some strong feelings one way or another on, on any of the issues or any of the solutions to the downtown parking issue, make sure you communicate those to Mr. Kessel or Mr. Soren so they can give those consideration as they put together a proposal for our consideration.
Thank you, President Johnson, that's an excellent addition. The next item is simply some thank you notes, as, as we provided grant dollars to numerous city, or senior centers in our area and other grant funds, many of those have issued a thank you note for the receipt of those dollars. The next item then is the Baylor Building Fire Update. All restorations have been completed in the Baylor Building. The total cost of the rehabilitation was over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've received a partial payment of a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and we do expect to receive full payment of those restorations in the near future. The next item simply is testimony that I provided at the North Dakota Interim Transportation Committee. Mr. Soren and I worked on that testimony. It is provided within your documentation there, and we did talk about many of the issues that have come to pass over the last few years, and some longer than that, such as the Highway twenty-two underpass. That is an issue that's been on our agenda for, for a great many years, and it's, we spoke about that and several other options, so I, if you have any questions about that, I'll certainly try to, to answer those. The committee was receptive, but we're in an environment where the federal government is changing the federal funding, and I don't believe that the, the state of North Dakota is going to have as, as much federal dollars to deal with and divvy out in the future. So we, we maybe rely upon, more rely upon ourselves to get some of these projects done. That's certainly the overtures made at this meeting and the meeting prior that the ND, DOT held here in Dickinson. The next item is an Elks building update. I did have the occasion to tour the building. It was a brief tour, but nonetheless, I was on the first, second, and third levels of that building. It is, they are moving forward. The second building probably has, or excuse me, the second floor probably has the most work. That, that area is studded out. They are preparing to put drywall in, the subfloor is, is obviously in. The third floor, and there's, there's a third and a fourth floor, those are for residential dwelling units. The flooring is in on both, or excuse me, the subfloor is in on both of those, so there's, there's been significant progress since the last time I toured. They were hoping to work on the first-floor facade this week, as long as weather permits, so we might see some movement on, on the outside of that building, on the main sidewalk level. So they are moving forward, attempting to meet our deadlines with that building. The next item is the Fair Association Commitment. I've included a few documents for you. The first one was minutes of the April two thousand meeting where the City Commission provided a, or dedicated a half a million dollars from the thirty percent sales tax to a regional recreation facility. In August, that was amended, and a hundred and sixty thousand dollars was provided to the Southwest Speedway from that five hundred thousand, leaving about three hundred and forty thousand dollars left. That commitment stands to this day, and the Stark County Commission recently addressed their commitment to this project. They did so via a letter to the Stark County Fair Association, and they did indicate that this project is no longer first in line when it comes to their funding. They also advised that the advisory vote be taken in regards to any funding of that Fair Association or the project they are working on. I, I raised this issue because in the original motion of support, it did discuss a joint powers agreement and a business plan be provided. It talked about county money being used before city money. If there's no more county money in this project, like, the question that I think this commission has to deal with at some point in the future is, is there city money remaining in this project? Right now, that three hundred and forty is, is there, but I'm not sure if you want to continue having that amount dedicated to this project, so. Next item then is the Stark County Unmet Needs Committee Update. That committee has since concluded their work. If you looked, I've included in the packet a report that was provided by Pastor Steve Tangen, he was the chair of that group. They dealt with fifty-one applications, they distributed close to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the applicants. I commend them on, on the work that they did. They had to come up with a system that's considered fair in distributing these dollars. They did so with the assistance of RAF, and the RAF volunteers have been excellent throughout this process. It was, it, I know they had been criticized very early in this process about the length of time it took them to distribute those dollars, and with their conclusion of their meeting wrapping up in less than a year's time, is way ahead of the pace of most other unmet needs committees in North Dakota. So I, I do commend them for their work, I do think they were fair, and I, I've appreciated the volunteerism that they showed throughout this process. The next item is, we, we completed the field work for our 2009 financial audit. The draft is in production as we speak, and we, preliminary reports from that financial audit are positive. We hope to present that to you in the near future so that you can provide or ask questions and we can approve that document a little later. The last item that I have before you then is, there has been a request made for a on and off-sale liquor license. Currently, there are no additional on and off-sale license permitted in the city of Dickinson, although our ordinance specifically states that if our population reaches an estimated population of eighteen thousand people, that the commission may, at their discretion, issue another on and off-sale liquor license. I believe at the next commission meeting, you are going to hear the individual who's requested that license, provide you with estimates that our population has reached eighteen thousand, and make a 18,000, and make a request that you create that additional license and then issue it. Our ordinance talks about how much it costs to issue that license, but it does not, and I'll have Attorney Coling speak to that, if you may, it does not issue a way for us to divvy out a license once a new one is created. There may be additional people interested if we do create another license. So Attorney Coling, I don't know if you want to address that issue?
Mr. President, Commissioners, I'm not sure that I have a whole lot to add to Mr. Kessel's comments, but I think it would be wise for the City Commission to consider the manner in which you want to allocate the license. I do think there'll be more than one person interested in it, and determining a fair method of allocating that license would be something at your discretion.
Mr. Coling, is it acceptable to auction a license like that?
It would be, yes. That would be one manner to do it.
I suppose you could do it by lottery?
I think any manner that you deem acceptable and fair is going to suffice.
Anybody have any comments here, any ideas?
Well, I guess my feeling is that the license is worth a considerable amount of money, and I'm kind of in favor of the city getting it as opposed to any other method that we might choose. I don't know that an auction or some of those things. At the same time, I'm also concerned about the possible use and who the individuals are. I think a lot of those things have to be taken into consideration as opposed to just looking at the highest bidder. I don't think that's necessarily the answer.
Well, it's good comments. Other Commissioners?
I would have to agree with that.
You agree? Okay. Do we have, like, an application for a liquor license?
We do. In the past, the only time we've used it is when somebody has purchased an existing business, they have to apply for the license at that time. I don't believe we have, to my recollection, issued a new license or anything of that matter.
So this is probably a time to review that application to see if it's still current and think about a process here. I agree with Mr. Frenzel in that these licenses probably are valuable, and the city should receive a fair amount of that value, whether we set a price on them or it's done in a competitive bid situation. It just shouldn't be given away. And maybe, you know, here again, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, maybe some of our fellow cities in North Dakota or in the region have a process that we can look at and consider adopting as our own.
The language that exists in our ordinance, which says that after every 3,000 population increase, we can add another license, is fairly typical in other cities. So we'll certainly make those contacts with other growing cities such as Williston, West Fargo, and such, and find out how they dealt with the scenario of adding a liquor license and bring that back to you as a reformer report.
Okay.
That would conclude my report, unless there's any questions on any of the items I reported on.
I would have a comment that I know we're really busy as staff stuff, but we need to continue with our budget process, and, you know, I think we came out of our budget meeting with kind of a list of things to do, and just wanted to encourage you to, you know, to work 18, 19 hours a day instead of 12 and get all those done.
We used to store chairs back here, but now there's cots in this room right over.
Tab nine, are accounts payable, are there any items in the accounts payable you wish to discuss or have questions about? Now, is there a motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll?
Second.
The motion, the second, any discussion?
You know, just very quickly, I know we're working on the possibility of electronic transmittal of some of our material packet. Unless somebody's got an objection, this is something we could do right away. If doing it electronically, we wouldn't have to, it's always a big bunch of paper.
It's a lot of paper. If, you know, if you have a paper copy for your own use, you could transmit to us electronically and bring one paper copy here, and then that's available for us or anyone in the public to look at. And you might do that with some of the contracts too, especially the standard engineering contracts with their engineering firms and, you know, the DOT. It's not like, unless Mr. Coling says they've got to change, we're probably not going to change those.
I'm not so sure that we wouldn't save money by going to the laptops available here for the Commissioners to use, and, I mean, here's today's.
Yeah.
Or just one. I think it's something to look into in the future.
I know, I usually read these at home early in the morning, so. We have the motion, don't we, in the second? Any other discussion here? Now, we'll vote, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Ms. Stugart?
Aye.
Ms. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Are there any comments by City Commissioners?
I would just have one quick one, Mr. President. I would like to see, and this is something for Captain Dossinger and Chief Rumel, I'd like to see the city start enforcing parking on lawns. Our city is starting to turn into a big parking lot. When I drive around, and that's a lot, seeing a lot of campers on lawns or cars or working equipment that they use, I really think that if you don't have the room to park these items on the street, then they should be, you need to find a different home for them. Or either the people have to start pouring cement slabs to park their vehicles on.
Mr. Soren? President Johnson, as much as I'd love for that to be Mr. Rumel's problem, I do believe that falls within our realm as well, and we'll certainly make note of it and make an effort in that direction.
All right. Anything else by City Commissioners? Okay. Any public issues? Anyone from the public wish to address the commission? If so, you can step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one from the public? Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn then.